I'd like to call the meeting to order. Following the town election, the committee will need to be organized, which requires the superintendent to open the meeting and run the election for the chair. Once the chair is selected, that person will take over the meeting. So do I have anyone who would be interested in taking on the role of chair of the committee?
No, really. There's gotta be somebody who's interested.
I'm worried that it's too more than I can handle.
Look, you've been with us for a year now.
A whole year.
You see that it doesn't take anything.
That's the biggest bunch of baloney I've ever heard.
Mike?
I can't do it.
Honestly, Emory, what does it entail? Honestly, like be completely honest.
What does it entail? I can do it.
All right, forget you. What does it really entail?
We talk on a regular basis.
Okay.
We plan the agenda. You are the front line to communicate to the rest of the committee. If there's a crisis situation, you receive a phone call. You're made aware as the chair of situations that happen on a daily basis. If it rises to that level, that the school committee needs to be notified. That's not often, but that's part of the role. Setting the agenda, making sure we're following through on our tasks and to-do lists, obviously running the meetings.
Yeah, I'm a little fuzzy on the running the meeting part. I don't know if I can do it. I don't think I can do it.
Emory, you don't want to continue?
I'd like...
So here's the thing. I've been honored and, you know, this is, I love it, obviously, that I've been on this. But also, when having the conversation that I have two more years on this term, and I'm not planning on running after that, and I believe in succession, succession planning, and that really requires someone to really learn the trade a little bit. Obviously, you know, in anything that you're involved in, if you will be the person who is running certain things, whether it's a meeting or anything else, there's a little more involved than usual. In our case, probably, the budget time is the busiest time because somebody has to really go, you know, through some of those motions, and somebody has to speak up at some of these meetings, you know, whether it's a town meeting or some other joint meetings that we have. But I know that everybody's been doing that kind of stuff at every meeting that we, you know, we participated in. My concern is that, you know, time will go by and we're gonna have these awkward conversations, and suddenly, we're not gonna have someone who had the hands-on experience to get there. I wouldn't mind doing it for one more year, but I can't, I can't do it for two years. I would prefer not to do it for two years. In fact, I would love it if somebody picked it up now. I don't mind being somebody's vice chair to support them this time around, or, you know, if somebody who's interested can be the vice chair to really learn some of the things that are going on behind the scenes. I think that is the healthiest way to support the continuity of the school committee, or of any committee for that matter.
So I don't mind doing most of that. There's just one piece of it that I have some issues with myself. I don't mind being the vice chair. It's just sometimes being the spokesperson out at town meeting might not be something I really prefer to do.
I don't mind doing the speaking part. So if you wanna do that part, I don't mind getting up in front of people.
So I'm not, and I'm speaking, but if you don't mind. I'm not entirely sure that there's a requirement that the chair has to do all the talking. It's almost understood in a traditional and hierarchical way that the chair stands up and does the speaking. But the way we started partitioning our work, you know, we have our subcommittees speaking on budget issues, finance issues, community relations issues, or planning, policies, you know, the other nominations or responsibilities that we had. It could happen that way. I mean, someone who is sitting on the Budget and Finance Committee would probably be pretty well-informed and hopefully well-versed to be able to speak at those meetings if they choose to do so. It doesn't necessarily have to be a single person. Again, my impression is that because we are looking at all these committees and boards in a more traditional way, we assume that the chair has to be, in some cases, it has to be the chair. You know, some, some things need to be signed. It is expected that the chair is gonna sign off on certain things. The chair will sign off on some budget documents, on diplomas, on contracts, and all that stuff. But other than that, really, there is a pretty good sharing of responsibilities that we started doing the last few years, so that may, if that is helping any of you.
So could we try one more year with you, and then I take the vice chair to kind of figure things out that way? Does that seem to work?
And if there's, if there's a public speaking part that you're not comfortable with, I'm good with doing that.
Okay. I mean, I don't mind speaking at a lot of the meetings with the joint committees. It's just sometimes getting up in front of that large audience. I will, I'll have some problems.
So what are we doing?
So do I have a nomination for the chair?
Emory.
For 2019, 2020.
Yes.
You guys have a chair, right? No? I didn't understand.
Do I have a nomination? I...
I think we're nominating you to be chair and Mike to be, for one more year, and Mike to be vice chair.
Okay. I thought...
That's what I heard, but I know that's not what you...
Not, not what you... That was wishful thinking.
He didn't want to.
Well, what about this? I didn't wanna do this, but Mike couldn't, can we be co-chairs? For, I can't, I know with my responsibilities and my day job, I can't take on the full responsibility of being the chair. I just, I know that I, I just can't.
I'm not sure that, I'm not sure if co-chair...
Co-chair will work.
I'm not sure either.
Yeah. All right, so let's, let's do it this way. You know, I, so two, two things to this. I was really hopeful that we were gonna have something different.
Right.
But if you would like to, we can try what you said, or we can try it the other way around. It can be the chair, I can be the vice chair, or whoever wants to be. I can still be the support, 'cause I'm here for, you know, for a couple more years.
Mike, would you be willing to do that? Have, be the chair, let Emory support you, and I, I'll...
We can both support in that case.
Yeah. I'll be the co-vice chair.
I guess, I mean, it's not that I was intending to when I walked in tonight, so I'm not gonna be ready for tonight, but I guess, I guess.
That's the way it works.
So do I have a nomination for chair of the school committee?
Yes, I will nominate Mike Simpson to be the chair of the school committee.
And I'll second that.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations. I think even the audience was rooting for you. Look at that.
Congratulations, Mr. Simpson. I turn the meeting over to you.
Well, see, this is where I need help now.
So now we, we have to elect a vice chair.
Right. So do we have anybody who would, who we can nominate for a vice chair?
Would you like to be the vice chair?
I guess I'll throw myself in it.
There you go. I will second that.
Before it changes.
I nominated myself. That may be important. Oh, well, let us put it in now.
So we have a second?
Yes.
I guess we take a vote now?
Yes.
All right. So I guess all those who agree or are...
In favor?
Yeah, in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? All right.
Bless you, bless you.
I think Kathy is not in agreement.
Well, congratulations to both of you. That's great.
Awesome. I love that.
And so one thing that I would like to do before we get started is to welcome Marcus Barron as our student representative.
Yes.
Welcome, and thank you for taking this on as a soon-to-be ninth grader, a freshman at Grima Junior Senior High School. So congratulations, and I know that you're not prepared to speak today, so we will make sure that you are on the agenda for next time. So welcome.
Thank you.
Good to see you, Marcus.
Hello.
And if you wanna say anything, you don't have to really wait for the next meeting. Just, that's, it's all good. We love it when our student reps speak up. That's why, you know, that's why we love having them here. So we're happy that you joined us this year.
Thank you.
Oh, look how fast he changed his name.
You couldn't wait for that to happen, could you?
I came prepared.
You brought your own new...
Yes.
Wow.
There we go.
So do we get on to the other, you know, all right. So I think we have a few more, a few more things we have to fill out. The first one looks like the CES rep. I had been doing that the last two years, but I was thinking that it was time to let somebody else do that. And in light of what happened a few minutes ago, I think it's, it's probably...
Breaking news.
Probably a really good time for somebody else to step into this. I can give you a little, you know, feedback. There's about eight to 10 meetings a year. They generally run the last Wednesday of the month, except for the November one, which is the middle of the month, because, so it doesn't, you know, conflict with people's holiday schedules. They generally are long meetings, start about 6:30 and run until about 9:00. Really informative, really neat stuff happens there, and for those that don't know what that is, that's a business, it's actually a business that runs a lot of supports for the school districts that are, that are the members, from taking on the special needs kids to professional development for instructors. So there's a lot that happens there, and there was a few things I wanted to ask about later tonight. There's a, so again, I think, I think we need somebody to take that. It's like one Wednesday, like eight to 10 times a year. They, they, they just sent out the next year's meeting schedule, so I can share that with, with those that, or somebody who decides to, to take that.
And you said that's at 6:30?
6:30, and they, and they generally alternate between meeting in the North Hampton location and up on Olive Street, way up north. I forget the town.
Greenfield?
Greenfield.
Yeah. I know right where it is. You come off Route 5, and it's like right there.
It looks like a lot of commitment, but I, having done it before, Mike, I think while I was a member, the, the conversation changed. It became a lot more relevant to what we would like to do, and this is collaborative for educational purposes. There's a lot of great dialogue and support. It can even do more, and I think members are much more conscious about getting to the point where they can do a lot more together. And some of the things that we've been talking about, whether it's the foundation formula or special education needs, as Mike said, offering programs to member districts, which I think, except for one, everybody in, you know, in Hampshire and Franklin Counties, they were members, and then that one, I think, is coming back, or did come back, something like that.
Yeah, I think they, they split, and they're now coming back in two separate pieces. We just, we just had a vote on that to approve that last...
So it is actually a good opportunity to get to know a lot of people very quickly.
The one that's in Greenfield, how long does that take to get to?
It's like 30 minutes.
From here?
Yeah. So if you're on that side of the mountain, it's even closer to you.
And remember, Mike doesn't exceed 30 miles per hour.
Well, I do, but the vehicle I'm in doesn't. No, it's a, it's a, it's a nice ride up, 116 and Route 5, or you can go right up to the highway to Route 5 if you want.
Yeah, I'm on this side, and I'd be coming from Springfield.
So then you'd probably just stay on the highway and go right up. Again, it's, it's not a bad ride. It seems longer than it really is.
And starts, is it still the same way, 6:30 to 7:00? It starts with a meal, actually.
That's from 6:00 to 6:30.
Oh, 6:00 to 6:30.
Yeah, never make it.
Yeah, if you didn't wanna make the meal piece, then you start at 6:30.
All right, I'll, I'll do that.
Okay. Do we have to take a vote on that? Okay. So, so can I get a nomination?
I'll, I'll move to nominate Jen Mallett to the Collaborative for Educational Services as our representative.
Very important question. Are you one N or two for Jen?
One.
Okay. And two.
I'll second that.
All right, so we'll take a vote. So all those that are, that are...
In favor?
That are in f-favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Is anybody opposed? West Street, so, so do we still need two folks for that, or?
Is it even still a thing?
I would say no, because we would be taking...
Yeah, so I know it's close, so we're...
I would table that one to next week.
Okay.
Because if we take ownership, then we would be fine.
Meaning?
We would be signing off and taking ownership of the building, which would dissolve the committee, is my assumption.
Until then, should we have members just in case? I mean, if there is a meeting tomorrow, nobody can go.
Yes, sorry, I apologize. Yes.
So, so do we need two?
Well, I'm still on it, so I'll stay on it. I would hope we have a meeting before we sign anything over. It's our responsibility, right?
Yeah.
But there isn't one set that I know of.
I know the MSBA is coming at the end of the month to do a walkthrough, and I'm not sure what the date is, but I can, I can find that out.
My guess is, again, following on what you said, that we're almost at the end of the process. We've been reappointing the same members, and it's not really, we don't reappoint anybody. The town reappoints the members. And as Jim said, Jim and I have been on that committee since the beginning, and you are a natural member of the committee, and I don't know if you are. No, you're not. Okay, so, so we already have members that will be participating in a meeting, but it may be a good idea to just make it official.
So do I hear somebody?
I'll nominate Mr. Petrus and Emory.
Yeah, that's my name.
I know.
I know.
I can't do it.
You can't do it.
And do I hear a second?
Yes, you can do it.
It's gonna be a fun year.
He's been Mr. Petrus since I was in sixth grade.
Haven't you yet?
Jim, that was the biggest concern we had in you joining and rejoining the committee.
Jim is my name. Jim is mine. You've graduated.
I can't do it.
You can do it.
Mrs. Danette is still Mrs. Danette to me, and your daughter's one of my best friends. Oh, funny.
Well, she's Mrs. Danette to me, too.
Well, there you go.
Wait, do we all vote?
Yes, okay, so let's, okay.
We voted aye.
I was gonna say, so all who approve?
Aye.
All right. Can we table the rest of this, so we can get on to Crystal?
Sorry, I have a charter meeting meeting, and I'm the chair, so you don't have to be there.
Just hold on, give him one more second after that. Sorry, 'cause I wanna get to that meeting, but we don't have any budget or operations, food service stuff until next time. I just wanted to, I didn't plan on returning. I would not report me at 8 o'clock.
Are you talking about you going to the select board meeting?
Yeah.
Do you mind if I quickly ask a question? Does anybody else need to go or should go to the select board meeting?
So our intent was to listen to what they had to say.
All of us?
No, sorry, Adam.
Okay, Adam, okay.
As the business manager, and then...
All right, that's fine. I think that makes sense. Good, good.
And you're meeting with who?
So, real quick, the management letter for the FY18 audit came out, so Scanlon is on their agenda tonight to talk about it, so I just wanna be in attendance to make sure there's any questions, concerns on our end, that we can address them. So I'm not meeting with anybody, I'm just gonna sit in the crowd to listen to what he has to say regarding the management letter.
Did you get a copy of that already?
Yes, we do.
And there any issues? Not to delay you, but just catching up.
Yeah, I wouldn't say issues, but yes, yes.
I can, I can fill you in.
Yeah, stuff that we've already been in the process of addressing, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Good, good. Sorry, sorry, Crystal.
All right, so I have exciting news. I have, myself and another teacher at the high school have found a trip to take ninth, 10th, and 11th graders to. It's in Miami, Florida, at the Florida Keys, and it's a science trip. It's through a World Strides organization, which I do believe Cheryl had sent everyone the website for it. It gave you the parent presentation, so when I talked to Steve Sullivan about it first, he's like, "Well, let's roll it out, let's see what the family interest is." So just to kind of give you guys the idea, this is one of the things that many parents came up to me and said that this school, for lack of a better word, was lacking, that we didn't have trips abroad, that that's one reason why students go other places, is because we don't have those out-of-the-classroom opportunities for students. Fifty-five families showed up for this parent meeting to go on this trip. And again, this was ninth, 10th, and 11th graders this year, which would be 10th, 11th, and 12th graders next year that we would be taking, should this get approved. So just to kind of give you guys an outline, this company's been around since the 80s. It was actually a history teacher that started the project, and if you watch the presentation, I'm not gonna get the date right, history's not my thing.
1980 something, yeah.
1960 something.
Was it in the 60s? Okay.
It was 86.
So a long time. So he started off as classroom teacher, wanted to take his students out of the classroom, and so he started this organization. They have 24-hour on-call doctors, they have a leader that will bring us to all our destinations to and from. They have people who are like night watches, so that the kids don't leave their room and go into other kids' rooms. So that was really important to me, especially at that level, that they are staying in the room and they're told to go to bed. But we would be leaving on April, it would be during April break, so that was another stipulation that Mr. Sullivan wanted me to look into, is that it didn't take time out of the classroom for our trip. So it would be Sunday of April break next year, which is the 19th, and then we would come back Friday, the 23rd. So they still get one day off before we head out, and then they get two days off before we come back to school. Everything is pretty much planned out to a T. I'm gonna give Kathy these, but I also have a couple extra copies at school as well. So it just goes over the five-day itinerary. I don't know who really goes to the chair.
Oh, okay.
So it goes over a five-day itinerary of what the students would be doing. There's really not a lot of downtime. The highlights of it is we go to the Everglades at night and during the day. We also get to swim with dolphins. We also get to go to the turtle hospital and watch the doctors and the nurses work on the sea turtles, and then put them back into the ocean, so that's really cool. So it just gives them another opportunity to do hands-on science, as opposed to just laboratory work in the classroom. So, very exciting.
It's amazing.
Yeah. So they also, and of course, the teachers at the high school are like, "Oh, well, do they have, you know, trips for foreign language?" Yes, they have that. They have it for history, they have it for so many things. So it doesn't have to be like a science trip that gets offered every year. It can be something different each year or every other year, just to get the kids out there and realize there's life outside of Grammy, there's life outside of Massachusetts. And it also gets their enthusiasm for not only science, but the other, the other curriculum as well, or the other subjects. So, yeah, I don't know. Do you guys have any questions?
I, I have one, and it's the one that you usually ask. It's about the price and how we make sure, 'cause I just saw the price here. I just wanna make sure that...
So it's 20, I think, $21.98, it says there, for, per student. That's with, with four students in a room. It includes our ride to the airport and back, it includes the flight there and back, and all of our food and all of our excursions. So if you were actually to tally up all that, it's well over that. As far as financial aid for the families that can't afford it, they, they offer like a flag financial package, and it's about a five-to-10-minute conversation with the families, based on their income, based on how many people are in the family, and they'll tell them right away, before they even sign up, what kind of financial aid they'll get. And if they have more than, so my biggest thing was, well, there's triplets, there's twins, there's, you know, several siblings that wanna go, how, do you guys offer a family package? And they said, "No, but each child is eligible for a financial aid package." So just because you give it to one kid, doesn't mean the other kid's not gonna get it. So it's something that they have to look into before they sign up, and just call the 1-800 number, and they'll walk them through it. But they offer $2.5 million of financial aid for students who don't have the funds to go to go. They also have a gift of education, financial, kind of like a fundraising tool that they have online, so that the kids can send it through Facebook, they can send it through emails, they can send it out to friends and family members, they can print out the letter and mail it to them and say, "This is what I want for my birthday or for Christmas, you know, if you can help me out and go on this trip." Some ideas that we're kind of playing with is doing also selling chocolate bars and stuff like that at the beginning of the year to help bring down the cost. The gift of education would obviously be the most ideal, because it's 100% goes towards their trip. So the rest, half of the money's not going towards a product, so to speak, or a company, but I know that a lot of people wanna see a product in their hands, so we also wanna offer other financial aid or other ways of raising the money throughout their school year. So the good thing is, if this gets approved and we can, we can do it, they can start now throughout the summer on their own, and then we can pick it up when they come back in the fall or in August, and then we can work on different fundraisers that we can do to help raise money for the trip for, for the students. So, I mean, we've got a lot of ideas, it's just, we're kind of putting it on hold right now.
I just wanna make sure, 'cause that's, that sounds like a neat trip, and I just, I just fear that people...
Yeah, and parents can go, too. I have a lot of parent interest. So as far as chaperones, they give one free chaperone for every 15 students. So the, if we wanted two chaperones for the 15, we would split the cost, or have to fundraise our way, too.
Is there a minimum amount?
Well, Kathleen O'Golly, the other science teacher, she did this in North Brookfield, and she went with 12 kids. So ideally, we would want 15, so that we get a free chaperone off, out of it, but you can go with a minimum of kids. They didn't really set a minimum, so they asked me to invite 150 students, so I decided to do the ninth, 10th, and 11th graders, 'cause that's who I know. And then next year, we, or not, maybe not next year, but the year after, we can offer it to another chunk of classes, so that kind of everyone gets the opportunity to go, because I know once the kids in eighth grade hear about it, or, you know, they're gonna wanna go when they're older. So it could be like in every other year, kind of, but they offer so many trips. They have three in Florida alone. We just picked the Keys as one of them, but they have two other ones, and then they do the Galapagos Islands. They, they do a lot. Yeah. It's an awesome opportunity.
Pretty exciting.
Yeah.
I'm actually happy to hear that there is so much interest in doing that.
It was like standing room only. I, we had it in the media center, 'cause we didn't know what it was gonna be, and I was like, "Um, I'm moving the chairs," and another parent was moving the chairs, "I have a standing room only." I'm like, "Come in, come in, I gotta get started."
No, this is, this is really important. This is something that I think is missing from most schools. So I, I've been sitting on the board of another cultural exchange organization, which was the organization that I came to the U.S. with, you know, 30-some years ago. So I really believe in the benefit of having these, these types of trips, learning outside where you are, getting maybe out of your comfort zone a little bit, and interacting with different people in different environments. That's, that's great. We can probably do some, you know, creative fundraising and all that throughout the year to be able to mitigate some of the costs for the students, to increase the, the number of participants.
That would be great.
So, yeah, that would be awesome.
So, because I looked at the website, that each student can do their own fundraising through the website?
Yeah.
So.
And it goes directly to their account, I don't have to deal with the money, goes directly to the account, which I love. Because that becomes a lot, because, you know, I went to Woodlock with the kids last year when they graduated, and it was a great trip, but it's a lot of work trying to round up the money, and making sure that everyone's settling and doing their part and stuff. So this puts a little more ownership on the parents and the students, but I can also offer additional fundraising opportunities throughout the year. So whatever they would make, I could, I'm not sure exactly how it would, would work, because as far as like money-wise, like do I write them a check and then give it to their parents and they put it in their account? Or if I can just give it to World Strides and say, this is for this kid, put it towards their account? Because then you know it's going towards it, so that's something I can work with Amber Willis, who is the representative from World Strides. But, yeah, so, a lot of potential, yeah.
I just have one more quick question, but don't take too much more of your time. Is this something that you might want to look at for a few years out, so you can put some sort of a, like a notice out there? So, so they don't feel like they have to take this one, because there might not be another one?
Absolutely, it's something that is very well, like, kind of adopted by the, by the community and stuff. It's definitely something that we can look into and have a, like, rotating schedule and stuff, yeah.
Yeah, just so they, so when they're sitting there looking at what they may want to do, and they can only afford one, they can pick the one they really, or, or as close to the one they really want to do?
Right, yeah. And I know since I, since, you know, I've looked at this program, a lot of teachers are going to want to do something. So it might be, you know, in, maybe not next year, because we're doing this next year, but the year after, maybe they're going to go to, you know, obviously pending approval, France, or, you know, something like that for foreign languages. So, we'll have to see, you know, now that we know that this company's out there, they're very reputable. A lot of the teachers are like, oh, well, I could do this, and I could do that, and, you know, so they're getting really excited, so.
And we're not committing for, we're not committing to this program on a multi-year basis, right?
Right, it's just for, it would be for next school year.
Next day, correct.
Yeah.
April twenty-twenty?
Yes, yeah.
So do we need a vote?
Motion.
Still moved. Oh, well, I have probably saved.
What are we, what is the motion that we need?
To approve the trip, right?
Yeah, to approve the out-of-state field trip.
So, I will move to approve the out-of-state, out-of-state trip for the World Strides program.
Second.
Okay, all those that approve?
Aye.
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 No, I actually have a bunch of them, so if you want to give it.
Do you want me to give that?
Yeah, I'll give it to Kathy.
Okay. Unless somebody else wanted to look at it?
Thanks, Crystal.
Did you want to see it?
No, I'm sorry.
Right, do we want to stay out of order and just take?
Nancy, take care of Nancy too, right?
Yeah, so she doesn't sit here and watch us.
Fill out the committee.
Yeah.
So, a couple weeks ago, we found out that we were awarded another Carlos Vega Foundation grant. The grant was written to purchase supplemental mindfulness materials to continue the work that we're doing at Gravy Junior Center High School. The staff, some of the staff have already been trained through K-4's self-care practices, and they're also doing some more implementation like yoga and deep breathing and other things like that. So these materials will be used to support that and any other students who may need additional support. So the money would be paying for yoga blankets, colored pencils, coloring pads, and reading balls. So that was about nine-hundred-eighty-four dollars and eighty-eight cents. So they officially have given us the award that we, you know, have requested, so. We're looking for your support in approving the grant monies.
That's awesome.
Thank you so much for doing that.
I have a question, there was a name, Aaron Vega, isn't he an elected official? Okay.
Yeah, they were actually, when they had the reception, it was zero first, it was like two or three weeks ago, tied us along by. But anyways, they said that they were extremely impressed with the application, it was actually the best application that they have received, and that they want to come in and see the work that we're doing, especially with their, their interest into social justice and in bringing empowerment to students and in the community. They felt really strongly that the work we're doing here is very important. I also had one of the board members, who is a retired professor from UMass Dartmouth in Boston, come up and say that she would be interested in contacting some of the researchers at UMass Amherst that she knows to come and do some research work with us if we're interested, and seeing the progression of the program as it goes from district-wide implementation, to see the overall impact on learning and, you know, social-emotional behaviors in the classroom. So, depending on if that's something we choose down the road, she's definitely interested in reaching out to us for that.
So, so that's kind of interesting, because I've been thinking the last couple of days that I wanted to actually start discussing, how, how do we know if these things are actually working the way we intend them to work, right?
Yes.
And maybe that's a way that, something that we can use to help us find that out, right?
And I know one of the other chair members, Jan Frey, who is actually one of our mentor schools under the DPH grant that's ending the end of this month, so I know that this is something we definitely want to go through as a district. I can reach out to her and touch base and getting that started. But in general, I mean, this is the second year we've been awarded monies from them, they obviously are supporting mindfulness in schools and are recognizing the needs, so it's wonderful to have that support from them, and we just keep plugging away, so. Maybe we need a metrics.
I like that. So I'll make a motion to, oh, sorry.
Well, I'm saying, I'm sorry, but I think that's where I was going, is like, I like what we're doing, but I just want to make sure that what we're doing.
Well, it's part of our strategic plan, right, is to continue to support, and Emery and I have been having some conversations about how are we measuring? And where's, where's our data, where's our measurement, where's our information, and where's our metrics? So, it's exciting when it like figures itself out, because in education, we tend toward the data, because it's, it's there. And take a step back, and what are we trying to help? Students be successful in the classroom, managing emotion, you know, managing anxiety, which we're seeing increase, students representing with increased anxiety. So, it's something that we will be talking about, and it would be great to have a measurement of it. And I know when we were working on the DPH grant cycle that just went through, that was one of the main topics that they were also discussing, was establishing programming in schools to address the social-emotional needs, because even if the kids aren't presenting in the clinic with saying that they have anxiety or nervousness or other issues going on, it manifests itself sometimes very much physically, and there were pre-visitors, so they were tapping in that in terms of the nursing visits, as well as starting to mesh that with guidance in the social work end, and bringing those together as a collaborative approach, because oftentimes, you know, we see it, but they're not communicating to us, or we're trying to communicate with them, and the messages are getting across, like, okay, this kid's been with us, you know, five days out of the last two weeks, or we think something's going on, we need your help into digging deeper why they're coming and not in class. So, obviously, it's, you know, statewide, the recognition that this is really much needed.
Thank you for doing the work on this, really appreciate it, I'm really impressed that they specifically mentioned this was the best application or proposal that they received.
Then Jessica Roy came with me, because she's, she's the one who's, you know, said, you know, Nancy, I need these materials, is there a way you could help me? And I said, let me see what I can do through the Carlos Vega Foundation, and so, you know, I wrote the grant with her input, and they addressed both of us individually about it, so that was really wonderful to hear.
That's amazing.
You'd like to make the motion?
Would we need a vote on this?
Yeah, we accept the funds.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I would make a.
I just want to, just so I understand why we have to vote to accept this grant versus the other grants, is it because we've already approved that budget, or?
This is an award, it's competitive, the others are entitlement.
Okay, I just, I was just a little, just wanted to make sure I understood.
So I will make a motion to approve the Carlos Vega Fund for Social Justice in the amount of nine-hundred-eighty-four dollars and eighty-eight cents.
I'll second.
Okay, and all those, that approve?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, Nancy, this is awesome.
Alright, so I guess we go back to all the fun stuff?
Bring in the schedule for.
So where are we with the policies, sorry?
So, we are complete up through, I believe, INJ.
Yeah, those are the two big ones left, right?
Yep, and they were just redone in two thousand and sixteen, so they weren't as out of date. But our work is over the summer to complete those, and then we will have a completely revised and updated, and approved, policy manual.
So it is worth putting two people back on this, right now?
Yes, we still can need two people back on this, yes.
Alright.
I will continue on that one, because I, that to me was interesting to see how all the bits and pieces fit together, plus I feel kind of committed, because we started, we started it, so.
Does anybody else?
Who was on with you before?
Jen Curran.
Okay, Jen Dunn, right?
Yes.
We haven't, I don't have Jen, you know, we have no shortage of Jens, just.
We have a lot of J, because we have a James, too.
Yes.
Jim, same thing.
I'll be, I'll make dinner.
There's some more of the other two, maybe, the last two.
So do we still need a second?
Want to do that one with me, Jen? This one, this one was a bad.
This one is actually going to be, if I may, it will be over relatively quickly. It would probably be two meetings over the summer, and then infrequently, as policy gets changed at the legislative level, we might convene a half hour before a meeting, and, or during a subcommittee, during a workshop meeting, and just go over the change, and then write a new policy, so.
And this would all be after?
Be on a different day, we were doing them, we did them on Tues, we did them on Tuesdays, because that's the day that worked, it was just a separate meeting. And we had, we were really good, we scheduled it for like either an hour, an hour and a half, because it gets overwhelming looking at all of this stuff, and we would just go through, and Cheryl puts it up on the whiteboard in her office and projects it, and we just kind of go through, and.
So, so just to make this a little easier, we were actually talking about reshuffling the way we do our meetings, so that we wouldn't be doing these off-cycle, they'd actually be part of our Monday schedule, if that, if that helps people, right?
Yes, absolutely. So that's, that's the workshop model that we're talking about?
Yeah, because I was thinking about number four, the budget.
That's good, suddenly everybody's interested in the Budget and Finance Subcommittee.
Well, that's, that's.
Yes, that's, that's your world.
So.
Do you think you and I could do it? Well, if we're, we're doing that on the Monday meetings, then.
Well, we still, I mean, we only have five of us and so many subcommittees, we're going to have to really move around and decide whether or not we're doing these things every other week, maybe we just move around. The nice thing, Jen, is that, I think except for Mike, everyone the last so many years took some part in this, and you may have too, I don't remember.
I didn't, so maybe it's my turn.
Well, I could, I mean, it could be that too, because it's really a good exposure to the policies of the school district.
Which, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, alright, I, I will. Oops.
Alright, so I think there are two self-nominations, Jen and Jen?
One and a two.
Yes.
Alright, all those, I thought, I thought they were in favor?
Aye.
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 Is anybody opposed? So it's Jen and Jen.
Jen and Jen.
Alright, next one, never, I never thought that this one would have so many people interested in it, but the, the Budget Subcommittee? That one, that, that, that one, a little history, we just started that up last year.
She's one.
So it was still, right now, still, we're still trying to figure out the, the overall plan, and then now that we're switching our model here, it's going to adjust a little bit, but Adam really put the whole thing together, and we met, I want to say, four or five times from the beginning of the year up through April, and he really just kept us up to date with what was happening at the school level, what may come up and what may not, and then the next time we met, he'd be like, well, that didn't pan out, we're not going to go in that direction. But it, it kind of gave us a little bit of insight as to the direction of the school, and most importantly, he kept us on point with meeting our target deadlines of being ready to present to the Select Board and the, and the other groups, you know, on time. So.
So you may, you may remember, this didn't exist before, as Mike said, so we're just, we're just learning the potential of the Budget and Finance Subcommittee, we, we didn't just say budget, we didn't just say finance, we just wanted to make sure that they were both mentioned in the name, so that there is a broader level of work involved. But obviously, subcommittees are, you know, they, they can't be, they can't be three people, because that's a quorum, it just remains two. But it's great that there is interest, and we can shuffle around, or the Subcommittee can bring, right, whatever they discuss to the full committee, and we can all be exposed to what those folks.
Well, I liked that, when you guys would bring stuff back, because a lot of the budget stuff got overwhelming, so it was easy to have the pieces, and then, you know, kept us, kept us on track where we were.
And again, it was Adam's show, he, he really did everything, and just really spoke to us when we were at the meetings, and answered what, what things we may have asked, but it was really him that did all this work.
And when did you meet with him?
Usually on Fridays.
On Fridays, Friday afternoons.
And again, the way we're switching our meetings around, we're hoping to do that more on the Monday nights. I think it's the first Monday of every month, we, we thought we would do that, or the second?
The second, I think, the sec, was it the second?
Well, because this is the first, so it would be the second.
The first would be business, and then the second meeting of the month would be the workshop model.
So you're interested?
Yes.
So I'll nominate Jen to the.
You are too?
And Jen?
Budget Subcommittee.
Sure, I would do that.
I did it, did you hear me?
Yeah, yeah, you, you okay?
Okay, although it's.
She's fine.
Did you, did you nominate Mr. Petrus?
I did. I said Jim.
Good.
Okay, so all who are, you know, in.
In favor?
Favor?
More in favor?
Um, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Wait, so it's Jim and Jen, right?
Yeah.
And then the Community Relations Subcommittee?
I'm interested in that one.
Okay, just so everybody has a, has an idea, this is another new committee we put together last year. I'm going to say for me, it didn't go where I had thought it was going to go, and I don't think it really went that far, because we just kept hitting walls with what direction we wanted to go with it. But we did determine that it's very worthwhile, we just need to, you know, collectively figure out, I think, a better blueprint, plan for, for what we want them to accomplish.
We need to pick a direction of how, so it was Jen Curran and I that started it, and we met several times through email and a couple of times in person, and we would come back and we would report what we discussed about, and the conversation would kind of circle around, like, well, what about this, what about that? So there's a lot of areas that can be covered and should be covered, but I think we need to pick sort of one at a time and give it some direction. So, I would like to be able to continue on it, but I can, I mean, I was part of the, the whole roadblock situation with it, so.
I, I wouldn't say so, I think you guys, first of all, as Mike said, we all had different expectations, and we did not know where it was going to go.
Yeah.
And it was a Subcommittee we created, and we wanted to find our path, and I think you guys did a great job bringing a set of potential actions and activities, so it allowed us to have good conversations around what you put together. It's just a matter of, as you all said, making sure that we prioritize what we can, we can act on, and then.
And we still have the folder out there, I think, that Jen had set up for the Community Relations, I think there's a, yeah, there is.
It's always been an issue that people within the school system maybe know, because you have your connected things, but the rest of us, how do we know anything? Or how does the community know, because there's a lot of other people out there who, if they're not connected, what do they know? Years ago, we talked about, there's, stuff should be sent to the town reminder, or sent, because it's free, there's no charge, but I don't see any of that. You know, so there's a perfect way, because people do look at that, I don't know if it's on channel twelve or fifteen of the community events, Facebook, of course, you'll see things there, but.
Posting at like the senior center in the town hall?
Well, anything, I think, I don't know, that's been the issue, I think.
So I think you're pointing to things that we wanted to do?
Yeah.
We just don't, yeah.
Know how to get there.
We didn't know the best way to get there and we didn't put together a really good goal. We just kinda said, go forth and conquer, and they came back and said, conquer what? We have too many choices.
So one of the things.
I've said for years, Gramby needs, someone in Gramby needs to do its own newspaper that comes out once a week or something other. That would be a win-win, you know? Because the Sentinel sometimes doesn't put things in because if they're not getting the advertising money from Gramby businesses, they, they go somewhere else first. Space available to put something in, but.
Yeah.
Someone needs to do its own Gramby rag paper or something.
That was one of the things that Jen found out. Because she, I think she called either Sentinel or the Reminder.
That's what they do.
And it was, um, something about, well, it's, um, it's free, but space is limited. And they, they said, like, there's a certain amount supposed, I forget how she said it, but something like, you know, um, you have so much space that's free and there's certain areas within the town of Gramby. Like, I think they post like the, um, is it the Meals on Wheels for the senior center? Like the lunches or something that gets put out? So there's maybe for so many advertising dollars that Gramby gives, they give us so much corresponding free space. So it sounded like Gramby's free space may have already been. But again, it's, uh, you know, I'm totally second and third hand and it's not quite clear to me. But we got the sense that if we wanted to be using the Sentinel or Reminder on a, um, a more regular basis for blurbs about the school, that there would be some financial impact, I think, so.
But the odd thing is that, it's a good thing that the Sentinel or Town usually covers Gramby's sports pretty well. There's very good sports articles, but there's not, when I want to look through it, I see Delta Town things, but I don't see, I don't see a lot of what's going on in our schools. So hopefully that would be a, I'm sure you've talked about that.
Yeah.
Something we've talked about years ago, too. Anyway, the good thing.
So I know we have Emery. Do we have anybody else who wants to be interested? Jen, did you want to stay or?
I would, I would like to stay because I feel like it's sort of started. But I know there's a lot of people, so as long as I'm, you know, if we all get to talk about it and, you know, maybe some of the, um, when we have some of the workshop time, if we can devote where we can all talk about it. I feel like we were making great headway when the group of us talked it through rather than just two minds trying to figure it out. Because there is, there's so much to cover. I feel like we can all, maybe it's one that we devote with, for the whole group.
I wouldn't mind helping on that one, too, because I'm sure the school one is gonna be, should be done pretty soon. So I don't mind helping out for a year with that.
Okay, um, yeah, and I think, I think the issue there is like, like we said, we never gave you a, a really good plan to, to follow.
It was Mike's fault.
Can we, I mean, is there a way that we can do it, that there's maybe primary people, but bring it when it's, when it's the Community Relations term for the workshop model? That we sort of use the brain trust model and all of us participate? Because I think that it's, I think we might get more accomplished that way. So we can have this really great conversation, like just, we're even starting now, just talking about who's gonna be on the committee and make some headway rather than, um, just two people and trying to report back.
So, so maybe, um, like we kind of meet as a group through that? And then two people are selected to kind of take and move things forward on individual tasks?
And if there's multiple people interested on it, we can maybe get more things accomplished that way. The Subcommittee can have subcommittees.
Well, the, the main reason for a Subcommittee is that you can talk about anything you want and you can decide to bring things to the full committee. But nothing that you do is really binding because you don't have the quorum.
Right.
Uh, but it doesn't mean that in the past, we did not, I mean, in fact, in recent past, until recently, we did not have these subcommittees. So everything was by full committee. We can, we can do both. It doesn't mean that we only have to, as you said, those two people on any one of these subcommittees, do all the work until it's cooked. They can't bring it back to the full committee. We can, we can share their responsibility.
Okay.
I guess my, my thing is, is do we need to vote two people in for the Subcommittee? Or are we just gonna kind of leave it wide open to the, the bigger group right now?
No, I think if we're gonna keep the Subcommittee, we should vote the members.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we were gonna vote a Subcommittee. And we have Emery and Jen, right?
Mm-hmm, but you said you wanted to be on it, too?
But, but I don't need to be. I'm following your model, so.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I'm gonna head out, so thank you for welcoming me.
Thank you for coming.
Thanks so much, Mike.
We'll see you, we'll see you, uh, soon again.
Yeah, alright, thank you, Rose.
Hey.
Have a good evening.
So where, where are we at?
I think we need a nomination.
I'll nominate, uh, so you, you, Jen will continue. Jen, I'll nominate Jen to, to the Community Relations Subcommittee.
Jen?
Yes.
Okay.
I nominate Emery.
I'll second that.
I'll say, yeah.
Okay, so do we have, do we have a vote for all to approve?
Aye.
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 Alright.
We have a committee.
Best of all, we got all of them. Um, all of our, all of our guests left. Does he, uh, does he want to say? Or is he, are you just listening in?
I'm just listening in.
I just wanted to make sure you didn't come with, with something you wanted to talk about.
I appreciate it, thank you.
So we did the new business already?
Yes, we need to do the consent agenda.
Consent agenda.
Yes.
Yes, right there. Alright, did everybody read through the consent agenda folder?
Yes.
And this is the one we vote on as a block? Uh, did anybody have any, uh, thing they wanted to ask about anything in the consent agenda? There's two warrants, three warrants.
I had, sorry, I had a question about the disposal of the outdated equipment. Is this the stuff that Dave was talking to us about before, the stuff that we just can't use anymore?
Absolutely.
Okay.
The stuff that was signed in the audit and stuff that has served us well for many years, but can no longer serve us.
Okay.
And that's because it can't take the latest version of Windows or?
Um, that's one of the reasons.
That's one of the reasons.
Some of it's just dysfunctional, it's burned out. Some of it is already been picked apart for me to take several parts out and reuse somewhere else.
Okay.
Cool. And so I wanted to make sure it was the same block of stuff that we were talking about before. You, this is the same stuff that you had brought up before that would.
It is, I usually come to the committee at least twice a year asking to do this because we use so much donated equipment and we have a lot of turnover.
Okay.
That's obviously gonna change moving forward, um, as we are buying some nice stuff next year.
Yeah.
So Dave, it's always tempting to, you know, contemplate and no vote on this just to see whether there will be a pile of laptops and that stuff somewhere.
How big is your garage?
Not, not big enough for all this stuff. I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, oh, actually, no. We, we, this is part of the, uh, package, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll make a, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Just a question, what, what are the warrants? I didn't get anything on that.
Those, those should have been in the consent agenda folder. Do you, do you?
No, I didn't get anything, so I don't, just, I'll look at them after. What are, what are the warrants?
Okay, there, uh, I have them right here. There, I think there's a payroll.
So the warrants are, um, for our expenses. Typically, uh, every month we get the, well.
We use to sign.
Each time, yes. Each time we get the payroll warrant and then we have the expenses, uh, related to vendors.
And, and what we did when I first started was, this was never in the consent agenda and the committee never voted on it. It's just those who sat nearer to Emery would sign it, you know, read through it and sign it. But then last year when we went to, went to the consent agenda, we thought it would be good to have everybody, you know, take a vote on it.
And now everybody gets to see what's, what's in the package, too.
So I, so I had a motion and a second?
All favor?
Yeah, I guess all in favor to approve?
Your words.
I, I.
Aye?
Aye.
And then, uh, the old business? Do we, do we have anything on your evaluation?
Wow, we did the new business.
Yeah, we did that earlier.
Emery was gonna speak to the evaluation?
Yes, uh, if you don't mind.
Yeah.
So the superintendent evaluation, and we were quickly chatting with Jim as we were walking in. We are, this is obviously the first meeting, uh, for the school committee of this new term. Probably it makes sense for us to at least get into the structure of it, but not necessarily rush into, you know, a deeper discussion and vote because that may, that will require. At the end of the day, uh, both Jim and Jen will not have as much exposure as the rest of us did with respect to, you know, what happened last year and, you know, your work. Uh, so I'm assuming that most of the, the weight of the vote will be on the three of us and our conversations hopefully will inform the rest of the new members of the committee that, uh, we can, you know, we can all, uh, agree on how we eventually vote. Okay.
And do we have anything?
No, I'll just, my, my suggestion was that we table it till, till the next meeting.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Does that have to be done by a certain time?
It should be done soon. Yeah.
Okay. So when should it be done by? I think that helps. When should it be done by?
Before the beginning of the next school year.
Okay.
And, and we, and, okay, I'm trying to remember if we had, like, I think we discussed a framework last time, but I'm not sure if we got, if we got any detail.
You have your goal that you shared with us and that's gonna drive our conversation.
Okay.
If the committee still would like me to continue to work on that and bring something, I can do that for the next meeting.
I think that's great.
Okay.
Keep the thread, the same thread going.
Alright.
Yes, the prior Subcommittee would, wanted to have a more authentic.
Not the one that's from the state or whatever?
Yeah, so try to kind of do both.
Yeah, we'll use the same, same framework in terms of what is being covered. But the structure that they have on that form is so cumbersome that it doesn't really help. And it's a lot of work, too, in the background.
And then, and I think, um, I think we were also discussing the fact that we, we almost wanted to get started on next year's almost immediately so that we.
We're not in this position again.
Like you had goals that you could work towards rather than kind of looking backwards at the end of the year saying, well, you know, what did we do, right?
Yeah.
And the workshop model, um, is this, is this on here just so we can approve it or?
No, this is just to bring, I guess, the new members up to speed, what we mean by that. We already talked about it, but, you know, you can refresh our memories on that.
Okay. So I think, um, I think what we agreed was the first, like, like you corrected me, the first meeting of the month is gonna be a regular business meeting, just like this. Um, then the second meeting of the month is going to be the workshop model where we can break into these subcommittees and, um, try, try to get more work done that way rather than the way we have been doing it, which is everybody takes even more time out of their schedule to kind of cram things in. And we weren't, I don't think we were being really effective or true to what we really wanted to do.
So I have a couple of questions. I've been thinking about this workshop model and I'm sort of really game on about it. But what I'd like to see is have, I think we need to have a schedule for a workshop model because as we were looking at it, so many of, there's only five of us and there's five committees. So if, you know, there's a lot of double dipping. So I think that if it's, you know, we have to have it mapped out, so who's coming to what meeting to work? Because if you're not, if you're not, if your committee's not being called or it's not gonna go on until seven thirty or whatever, you can show up at that point. Because other, you know, unless you want to come in and sit and listen, which is also part. But I think we need to kind of figure out a schedule for that. But I'm not sure how that looks yet. You know, is it one meeting is for, or are we all gonna try to meet all of them? Like, that's where I'm fuzzy in how we wanna.
I think we all are fuzzy on that one. We're just trying to really establish that, my guess. The, the idea, if you don't mind, behind this was that when we have the typical traditional structure to our meetings, the regular meetings, we get into these circular conversations on a lot of tactical things. And the last couple of years, we put a lot of focus on our strategic plan. And the, the, um, the subcommittees are actually aligned with the strategic plan in a way because a lot of the work that came out of that strategic plan work was focusing on the finance, uh, budget-related issues, the improvement opportunities in the school district, communication with, within the school district and with the community. So we'll try to capture all those in these, uh, in these subcommittees. And we can create more and eliminate some if we wanted to. The idea is to make this new workshop model keep us a little more focused on what, what is in the strategic plan as opposed to, you know, have these long conversations that are primarily on administrative things or tactical things. We don't get to talk about the strategy enough.
And I think to Jen's point, um, when I look at how the committees now have been voted, I look at the Community Relations and Policy that, um, that may be able to be done on an alternate. So if you don't mind, I, I can do a draft of what the year might look like, um, with day one, day two. And then day two, just try and play with what committees would meet when. Because, you know, clearly, budget might need a little bit more time.
Right, well, absolutely.
You know, so, um, but I can certainly draft something.
Yeah.
So are we gonna still need, as part of, and this is, and this is what I was thinking, are we still gonna need part of that second meeting to go over some business? Um, like a consent agenda, because there's still gonna be a meeting, there's still gonna be some minutes to, to approve? I haven't been to a meeting without having a warrant or two to sign, right?
Yeah, that was the idea. And let me offer a couple of things. So one of the things that I'm hoping that I can do, uh, starting this year, over the course of the next couple of years, focus on a continuous improvement framework. And part of that is really change some, some of the things that we are doing or how we are doing some of the things. What we talked about, I think, uh, when we first came up with this workshop model is that the first fifteen, twenty minutes, we would have a quick huddle-type meeting and say, you know, these are the things that we need to cover, whether it's our consent agenda or anything urgent that needs to be covered. And then break out into those subcommittees to, to work on different things. And we even return to regular session afterwards if there is anything that we need to change. But one thing, I think both Jen and Deanna at the time said, we don't want to be here till eleven o'clock, so we have to make sure that we, uh, time-box it. And the work of the subcommittees and whatever is gonna be around it, before it or after it, whatever it is, has to be time-boxed and, you know, well, well-planned. So if you can help on that, that will be.
So I think almost the agenda for the workshop model needs to be framed out differently because it needs to be like a truer agenda, you know? We should be able to do six thirty to seven, no problem, get our business part out of the way. And then whatever the time is, seven to eight thirty, seven to nine, or whatever, to be able to do that. But is your idea that you, because you keep saying, like, I, I'm not sure, is there multiple committees meeting at a time? That's where.
Yeah, so my, my thought was, um, originally is that certainly budget, let's just say that the workshop models went from seven to eight thirty. That budget would be working with Adam from the district. That, um, that because policy and community relations is a little close to each other, that that could meet, um, with me. And that, um, the, what was the third?
That's it?
That's it.
Okay, because the other.
We're, we're, we're short of subcommittees, you know, we can't create more.
Are there other people that are invited to these meetings? Like staff, administrators that are part of these? Are they ever part of your little subcommittee stuff so it doesn't fall upon you all the time? Because I'm just curious.
Right, so I think that's part of our discussion.
To invite other people in so it isn't just two people trying to do everything? When, you know, it's always kind of like, we're, come up with things, but other people have to do them. Because we don't do them, but somebody, including the administrators, it falls upon them. So I'm curious if they're ever part of the, or they should be, I think. Because we expect things of them, so it doesn't fall upon you all the time, but.
So I know one thing, um, that Jen and I had come up with for the Community Relations was that we definitely wanted there to be, um, a staff and a community member to, to be involved. But that's where we got hung up, is how do we go about doing that? Because it would be fantastic to be able to have a dedicated meeting time to have that. But how do you call for the volunteers? Like, where does that come from? And certainly if people are watching, they can let us know, they can email us. But we weren't sure where, like, that's where we got hung up, sort of, is how do you start? And, you know, and that's one of the things we've been talking about since I've been on the committee is we want more involvement. We'd like to see people in the audience participating. And so on these workshop models, you know, are they, are they open meetings? Are they actual meetings? Do people get to come? Like, where? Do people get to come? Like, where, what are the expectations around that?
Well, anyone, go, go ahead.
As I say, well, uh, let me be the workshop model. When we pencil out when we're going to have that, that's when we can reach out and say, if you're interested in this meeting, this is when it's going to happen. And it's going to be on this month, and then we're going to skip a month, and then it's going to be on that day. And it's from this time to that time, right?
By open meeting law, any, any meeting that we have, whether it's a subcommittee or a full committee, it's always public. So anybody can just come and sit and watch and, you know, if allowed, ask questions as well. But what you mentioned and what Jim was asking about is something that we discussed, especially for something that says community relations, you know, two people, aside from the burden eventually falling on someone, obviously, the, you know, the challenge is, if you're going to do community relations, you have to have some representation from the community. And, uh, community works both ways, school community and community, uh, overall, uh, in Granby. So how do we engage those individuals? As you were saying, we don't necessarily have that yet, but that's where we would like to get to with these subcommittees to have more, more involvement.
And then are we going to have to agree and create a framework if we're going to add, say, three people, three more people, one from this group and two from that group as well as the two from the subcommittee? Are we going to have to agree that's going to be a committee of five and are going to, you know, do X, Y, and Z?
I don't know what, how that works. Honestly, that's a good question. I, I'm not sure how that works. We need to find out.
Well, let's give it a try again.
Yeah.
Follow up what you've already started and see if we can...
Right.
Push it along. And I always think, try to keep it simple. So we try to accomplish something, sort of the big picture, at least something...
Yep.
That you know you've done something, that's measurable, that, yeah, we did something.
Yes.
We're seeing more, communities are more aware of things. Even if it's an article, whether people look at it or not, that's a start.
Yep.
You know, like I said, you know, it's nice and all the sports teams are doing, but what's going on in the school, too, is, as much as they're all part of the overall education.
Yeah. No, I absolutely agree. Even, you know, Crystal's saying that she received such great interest, uh, for something that involves, you know, learning, travel and all. I, I personally tried it, uh, several years ago because of my involvement and, you know, global competence and all that, you know, the international exchange programs. There wasn't as much interest. So I'm, I'm encouraged now that there is something, but we don't know. You're absolutely right, because we're not really communicating. We don't have that type of communication within or outside the school district.
So you're going to take that back and kind of help us frame, frame that out?
So for our next meeting, is, that's supposed to be a workshop meeting, right?
I'm not sure we're ready, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
May I suggest this?
Well, well, that and I think that we've also, so before Adam left, he also said he's going to have some more data as far as his reports and, uh, the school lunch program, too, right?
I think we need to wrap up the school year business this year and then plan for nineteen twenty that our business needs to be conducted, um, so for example, the June, the first Monday of June, we would have to have everything ready for school committee, you know, budget transfers, end of year recording requirements, anything like that. So we still have some business that we need to conduct on the seventeenth. But for next year, yes, we will be aligned.
Um, I do have a conflict for next, our next meeting on the seventeenth. I'll do my best, but Lance is on business travel and my mom is away, so I have no one to watch my kids. So I'm hoping to be able to, um, figure it out. And Mary's has a softball game, too, so I'm just trying, or, I'm sorry, yeah, softball game. So I'm working on it, but I'm, at this point, I may not be able to be here next, uh, next meeting on the seventeenth.
So now that I'm not the chair, I would like to ask this question. Is there, is there an interest in changing the days that we meet? So instead of doing all Mondays, maybe it's one Monday and one Tuesday. And the reason why I, I, I'm asking is this almost always driven by similar things. Today, there's a select board meeting, which would have been nice if we could all go and, you know, sit there and participate. But we can't because we always have our meetings on the same, same night. So we can...
Do you think they'll change their meeting? If we just our luck, we, we switch it up?
Now, you know, I've often wondered that. It's like, why, I mean, if we need to speak with them and we talk about a liaison, like, how would a liaison even work? Because...
Right, exactly.
They're meeting the same time that we're meeting. So it, would it be in our, you know, our best interest to shift, I guess, to your point, one of our days each month? But I just don't have any answers as to what day that might be.
I actually asked my staff, they're willing to change.
Change to?
A different day, knowing that school committee, I mean, select board is Monday typically, um, so that we can be more engaged in a select board conversation.
When's Vincom meet? Are they Mondays also?
I thought they were Tuesdays.
Oh, it's, yeah, I think they meet anytime, all the time.
Okay.
So, so do we want to take that back, um, and maybe talk about it at the next meeting? Just give everybody a chance to kind of think through their schedule, which day they, you know, would work best for them?
Yeah.
Have you talked beyond June seventeenth?
No, because we have to set the schedule.
So, uh, finance committee, just very quickly, they don't meet regularly because they don't really have regular, uh, business. But they meet as necessary. Sometimes they meet three nights in a row as we get close to the, you know, budget season. Uh, for instance, this week, they had two meetings scheduled, one for tomorrow, one for Wednesday. So they have that very busy season and then sometimes they don't have any meetings for, for a month or longer. Uh, the other elected committees or boards, they typically have a, a specific evening selected, whether it's select board, planning board, and, you know, others.
Okay, um, I guess we'll move on to reports. Do you have?
I do.
Record, Chris?
It's in your folder. Uh, we are growing some of our own food. Um, thanks to our kindergarten students for harvesting our first crop. Mr. Latoy said that the spring greens were amazing and we can't wait to see our food being served in the cafeteria. Each grade has a container garden, thanks to the Granby Educators Association and Robin Lomorder. Well done, I mean, well grown. We're very excited about this program. Uh, congratulations to the Granby Music Department on a wonderful spring concert. The event was thoroughly enjoyed by all and it is absolutely amazing to see how much our musicians grow over this, over the year. And also, I should not be remiss, and I will add it, um, thank you to the drama, uh, department that, uh, ran the drama show this weekend. That was well attended as well. And then, of course, it would not be a superintendent update without, um, sharing the news of another wonderful prom event, uh, that was held this year. Thank you to the staff and students who worked so hard to make this evening special for everyone. And then finally, our senior activities are in full swing, including the senior banquet this Tuesday, um, followed by the senior awards on Thursday. And graduation is Saturday, June seventh. So we will see you there.
June eighth.
Yeah, Friday is the seventh.
Sorry.
No, don't worry, I've been doing it all. So the eighth was Sunday.
What time is graduation? Ten?
Ten.
Um, the West Street School Building Committee, I'm pretty sure hasn't met in a while, right?
No.
And Adam said that he's going to give us his information next week. CES, we did meet last, uh, last week. Uh, it was mostly two items. Uh, the budget for next year was discussed. Um, similar but different than our budget. Theirs is, um, they actually run their business like a business. Um, so their, their budget does change a lot more throughout the year as they get new grants or new things, you know, come in. It will have to change their budget. So while we looked at, um, last year's, it was not voted on, or, I'm sorry, while we looked at next year's, it wasn't, you know, it wasn't set to be for a vote, it was just discussed. Um, the other thing that was wrapped up, and I think you'll be happy to hear this, is Bill's evaluation is now complete. Um, they went over the results of that.
Who's Bill?
Bill, Bill Deal, he's the, uh...
Executive Director.
Yeah, the executive director. I, I didn't know the title.
I just, I asked because Jen doesn't know who Bill is.
Uh, great guy. Um, then, um, I, I do have that packet and, and, and what you'll see is they'll email a, a little report out the day after. Um, I'm going to, I started trying to get that in, you know, our, our drive here to look at for, you know, for everybody. I'll put that out for next week's, uh, meeting so everybody can see it. Um, but that'll be something when you get the email, um, if you can make sure that gets in, you know, our drives, so that we can all read it. And I think we need to send them a letter, too. How does, how does that work? The fact that I'm going to be not part of it anymore, but...
Typically, you just show up and say, I'm from Granby.
Well, normally, they have a little card made out ahead of time, too, and they email you ahead of time saying...
Yeah, we can send an email.
I do the letter off, I'll, I'll send it to the collaborative.
Okay.
Alright. Yeah, I knew they, they already knew me when I walked through the door, so...
So do they, they have a schedule?
You just gave out your secret.
There is a schedule and I'll share that with you. I'll send you, I'll send you that via email.
He says the last Wednesday, right?
Yeah. As a matter of fact, it might even be in that packet that I, that I dropped in there, too. It might be on the last page. It was on the last page of my packet. But I'll, I'll put that in for everybody to read. I just didn't get a chance to do that before today's meeting. Okay, um, I don't think there's anything for, for any of the other subcommittees here. I don't think we've met. Um, so...
Is there a, is there an executive session?
No.
Nice.
I didn't want to scare the new members.
Alright, so, um, I guess we vote to adjourn, right?
I'll move to adjourn?
Second.
I guess we vote to approve?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
I'm going to need some help.